The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
We are going to get started as we have several items to get through for the joint meeting in order to stay on time. So if everybody is ready, I'd like to call to order the joint meeting for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, 6:45 in the chambers. We are starting about five minutes late. I'd like to ask everyone who is with us and able to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on September 8th, 2020.
Move approval.
Let's move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second item is our consent calendar for items 2A through M. Does any member of the joint meeting wish to pull an item off for further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2019-20 to fiscal year 2020-21, totaling $1,171,373 within the general fund.
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 2019-2020 to fiscal year 2020-2021, totaling $15,160 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to approve carryovers from fiscal year 1920 to fiscal year 2020-21, totaling $399,206 within the Sewer Operating and Assessment Fund.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is to make transfers totaling $1,773,234 within the general fund as of June 30th, 2020, for the Board of Education.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is to make additional appropriations totaling $1,353,234 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund as of June 30th, 2020, for the Board of Education.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight is to decrease appropriations totaling $35,330 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, to make additional appropriations totaling $1,860,335 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I lost track. Where are we? 10? To make transfers totaling $26,425 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 11 is to decrease appropriations totaling $702,750 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, to make additional appropriations totaling $20,054 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, to make transfers totaling $2,203,261 within the Capital Projects Fund Schools as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, to decrease appropriations totaling $36,308 within the Capital Projects Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Move it. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 15 is to transfer $4 million within the general fund as of June 30th, 2020, for major road improvements.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. As you know, this is the grant we receive at the end of the fiscal year, necessitating the transfer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 16 is to transfer $350,000 within the general fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 17 is to make additional appropriations of $1,650,000 within the general fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 18 is to make transfers totaling $1,270,55 from the general fund contingency account as of June 30th, 2020.
Move approval. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And 19, to make additional appropriations of $720,55 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund as of June 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 20 is our monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller. Her report has been circulated. Good evening.
Good evening. Don't you just love your end? All of those street spurs, and we thank you. Those are all needed to close out all of the capital project funds, get everything in line, and the general fund as well. So I know it was a lot, but we're getting close to having the auditors come in. So this is all good. Just want to talk a little bit about 2020, 2021. As you can see in the report, and I'll go quick because I know we're short on time here, the revenue collections, as noted, I think at the end of this month, I think will be more in line. I know we did not see much of a cash flow issue that we thought we would with the deferral through October 1st. Our prior year tax revenues are coming in very well. They're at 45% of budget at the time that I did this report. And then our building permit fees and our conveyance taxes again are overcoming in much higher than budget for this time of the year. One thing to mention that I have mentioned, investment earnings. Right now, we are only at 10%. We knew we were going to have an issue with that when we were working on the budget. Interest rates are very, very low. We're doing the best we can to get everything invested as much as we can and at the best interest rates, but it's challenging right now. On the expenditure side, I just wanted to note a couple of things. If you're going through that expenditure report, if any of you look at the detail accounts, you'll see a lot of the negatives and COVID accounts and storm isaias accounts. A lot of those, we're hoping will be replenished when we receive FEMA funds. From what I understand, and I just confirmed this with the Public Works Director, the application for the storm is still pending down in DC as far as like the declaration. So as soon as we hear that, and I think our costs were around $250,000, I think, in total for that. Of course, not all of that will be reimbursed, about 75%. The one other account just to note is the compensated absence account. At this time of the year is overspent. We did have a lot of retirements at the beginning of the year, so there were a lot of expenditures in that regard. COVID FEMA update, right now, I do know that of the $424,000 that we put in, I do know approximately $95,000 we had to pull out that will not be eligible for reimbursement. So we are still waiting on the balance of the $329,000 for them to give us the final declaration on that. We're hoping to hear from that momentarily. I mean, I don't, we've answered so many questions on the expenditures that we submitted. It's been very cumbersome. So of the 329, we anticipate 246 roughly to be reimbursed, and the balance will go to the state fund. There are questions right now, I will say, as to what that fund is going to cover, and we're hearing conflicting reports if they're going to cover everything that FEMA does not, including some of the things that they deemed ineligible. But time will tell, so I will keep you posted, and hopefully we'll have a better report on that next month. June 30th, just want to talk about that a little bit. You did do a lot of transfers earlier, and you moved some money around. The auditors are scheduled to be here the last week of October. Right now, unaudited, the revenue over expenditure surplus was $7.72 million. As noted, $4 million of that was roughly for the road, the municipal grant aid money that we got at the end of the year. That was $4 million that we transferred to the Road Improvement Fund. 1.7, the Board of Education returned of that amount. 1.3 was reserved for them for the following year. They were allowed to do that by state statute. And $420,000 of that went to replenish the school lunch fund. We did put $2 million into the mill rate stabilization fund, and $550,000 to replenish the health benefits fund as well. And then, of course, the Equipment Building Sinking Fund is something we do every year. 720,000 went there. Just, if you notice, the surplus was 7.72 million. We transferred $9 million to these reserves. We did that. We are still within the fund balance policy that the Board of Finance has, to stay between 12 and 15%. So right now, with all of these estimates, again, not audited, we're at 14.5%. So still well within the guidelines of the Board of Finance. Two other things just to update you on. The GFOA did award us the award for our comprehensive annual financial report again, which is the audit, and they did award the achievement award to Rob Emanuel, who is very instrumental in putting that together. And we did get the PAFR award. That's the Popular Annual Financial Report, and that is basically the CAFR in a much condensed form for the basic reader to kind of really understand the financial statements. And that Skip Gillis in my office is very instrumental in putting that together. And then, one other thing that we had to do on top of everything else is Fitch actually called us or sent us an email wanting an update on how we survived COVID, where we were, how we ended last year, what we anticipate for this year. So we provided them with a very comprehensive report, and they did that. They have to do that annually just to get an update from the communities, but they were very comprehensive in what they asked for this year. And they did reaffirm, not reaffirmed, but they basically, we still have our AAA standing with Fitch. So I thought that was good news to report as well. So with that, any questions?
I have one question. First of all, congratulations on your awards. I was reading through that, and that was awesome to hear for your office. You well deserved. Just curious for the two man that went back to the mill rate stabilization fund, does that completely replenish that fund? Did we end up having any more in that fund from the last fiscal year?
Very good question.
Yeah.
So basically, we have been putting some funds in there. There were some bond premiums that had gone into that fund over the prior year when we did some bond issues last year. So the total that was actually transferred into that mill rate stabilization fund was about $4.1 million. But of that $4.1, this is including the $2 million, 650 was reserved for tax relief. 600,000 was reserved for this year's budget.
Yes.
And then we have 700,000 that's reserved for the bond premium that we can only use for debt service. So that leaves about $2.2 million that's available.
Excellent. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for the Controller? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the joint meeting? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn and reconvene the City Council meeting in about two minutes. Is there a motion to adjourn the joint meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. So good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to our October City Council meeting for October 13th. We are going to begin by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to ask the members of the City Council to introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, District 2.
Greg Hahn, District 1.
Scott Rosato, District 1.
Dave Proleski, District 2.
Brittany Barney, District 3.
Mary Fortier, District 3.
Okay, and I'm Mayor Ellen Zappos-Sasse. For our opening ceremonies, I would like to have a moment of reflection in memory of Ronnie Davis, a longtime Park Department employee, as well as retired Deputy Chief Fred Guio, both of whom will have funeral services this week, and also in reflection for all of the people in Bristol who are suffering from breast cancer during our Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and those who are no longer with us. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on September 8th, and the special meeting that was held on September 2nd. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, clarifications, or corrections needed? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and let that reflect that the vote was for both sets of minutes. The next item on our agenda is public participation. I know that we have one person that's already signed up, Sheena Schmidt. If you'd like to come to the microphone, we can start with you. We just ask that you say your name and your address for the record.
Okay. Is it okay if I just run over time?
It certainly is.
My name is Sheena Schmidt. I live at 200 Prospect Street Apartment 1E in Bristol. I am 34 with two children, Elijah 11, and Ezra who's four. I have no criminal record or any prior drug use, and don't have an active DCF case. I have one sister who resides in Bristol, and this is my only means of family support with all of the things that I have been going through. At the end of 2013, we suffered a fire and, hold on, and Red Cross gave me $450. My son and I were homeless for almost two and a half years, in and out of shelters every 60 days unless granted a 30-day extension that the shelter and state would both have to agree on, before I was accepted into a transitional housing program out of New Haven. While residing there, I was president of the resident council and held weekly meetings to try and help women living there, sorry, find a way to barter for food or childcare so we could work and get on our feet. I was also active in the organization Mothers for Justice as well, and spoke at the Capitol. I landed a job at Yale New Haven Hospital and was there five months short of being a five-year employee. I was homeless while working at Yale for a year, and working nights for almost two years. Sorry. I qualified for their hardship program and that they give the opportunity to any employee to get up to $2,000 after, you know, you can't have anything on like your record or anything like that, working with them. And they gave me a $2,000 security deposit, which I used for an apartment, 200 Prospect Street. Sorry. I broke my foot two days after signing a lease, shattered it really, and was in a cast for six months. I managed to get a 40-hour position when I returned to work after my foot had healed. However, I was no longer eligible for food stamps, and I had to pay out-of-pocket $300 per week for daycare until care for kids was supposed to kick in. However, I was still paying $584 a month out-of-pocket. Since living at this address, my building has been raided twice. My landlord has refused to plow the driveway. I have had mail stolen in and out of my mailbox. I have had human feces smeared on my mailbox, a dent in my car totaling a $900 damage to my fender. I have, my apartment and three others are infested with rats. I actually brought one here from Saturday because I'm being told that there's nothing to do about this. This was in my stove. I've already had to replace bedding, ACs because my kids have asthma, and, I mean, I get side-dressed. Sorry. Oh, my building was raided twice also because they were selling drugs and narcotics out of the second floor. For six months, a six-family main sewer line broke, and everyone's fecal matter was backing up into my toilet, where it remained for over six months. Two plumbers who left because they didn't have the stomach for it, I fell to my knees crying and begged him to please just let us use our toilet because I was only able to go, or my kids, and my sister's house, a Dunkin' Donuts, and this was all while I was working. My son in January broke his leg. Neither here nor there how it happened right now, but he was pushed off a playescape, which resulted in, you know, wheelchair service I had to get. I had to take a reduced schedule, and my FMLA was not approved with Yale. When the daycares closed, I, that was my last straw basically with Yale, and I was not approved to take a leave of absence. So I was fired. The other problems that I have in my apartment are that there are still drugs being sold out by a girl who is receiving Section 8 and has been in and out of jail twice while my landlord continues to receive payments, which is illegal. You can't even have a record actually with having Section 8, but somehow she still gets her rent paid. My faucet wasn't working. There's mold in the bathtub, and even Ellen was nice enough to get a full building.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Team visit.
Team visit. And my landlord, Slumlord, the only, like, the mold, this is how she fixes things, caulk and four pieces of plywood. Mold on the top, paint or caulk. The rats, as you can see, she's just emailing me today because she knows that the inspection is tomorrow and she may not be able to. I also was trying to prove that there were drugs being sold, so Officer Clark, I had been in touch with for at least a year, and when she came back this last time because she was stealing my stuff and was retaliating so much, she actually threw a knife at my kids from the third floor, and nothing could be done about that either. I'm just, I just want people to know, if nothing else, that the only way that me and my kids are going to get out of this is through going in another shelter, which I'm, which is absolutely insane to me because I already lost three years. And I've never got anything that half these people I know have gotten, and they abuse their privilege, which is a smack in the face, to be honest. I mean, anyway, so over the last month, I, my daughter became friends with a little girl, and I now have the text to prove that she's selling drugs out of the apartment. And I'm, you know, it's just this past two weeks.
Okay.
And my landlord is just unreal, to put it mild. So my plan today was to come and just speak about, you know, when, sometimes when you have like a trickle-down effect, it just, obviously, it's not fair, but I think that sometimes, like, people should not have to, like, go back to a shelter with their kids because it's, it truly, I have pictures of the one in Bristol, and actually, I had to report that guy, which I have record of, to the state because instead of helping me, he was hitting on me, offering to cook me pizza at his house. So that's how the guy at Jacob Street was removed from there because I had to file an actual complaint with the state. So anywhere I've turned, really, it's like, I get a ton of promises, and then me and my kids are just like, and I get, like, I'm a hard worker. The day I broke my foot, I did a double. I was working 14-hour days. I'm not afraid to work. But at the same time, I just, I'm worn out, and I think that something else should be done for people who are in my situation, and more people who are either homeless or about to be should, I mean, if you have a history of being homeless, why are you having to rot in a shelter? I'm just going to say it. And shelters, just so you know, even if you have no record or whatever else and you're not a dirtbag, that's the only nice way I know how to say it, you still have to turn on your phone every night. You have to leave from 7:30 to 5:00, which means now I have to take both of my kids. And I just don't understand how this woman is able to rent. Because if I had even just one of these rats, and normally, there's a whole graveyard on the side of my building that she comes to clean up before a crew comes and she has the heads up. But I literally had to call the Health Department for over a year before foam was just caulked into my heater vent, for instance, where one of the areas they come out of. So that's my spiel. I just wanted to raise awareness and just say.
It's a. It is. So it's kind of ironic in that code enforcement was actually born on Prospect Street in 2001, when Councilman Burns and I at that time visited an apartment a little further down on the corner of Prospect and Moonchowzen, where the ceiling had fallen in on a children's bedroom. And at that point is when we started to organize and have all of the code enforcement team visits that we currently do. I've been in Sheena's apartment. I've been in several of the other apartments on 200 Prospect Street, and it is a textbook of what is wrong with the housing system, of what is wrong with landlords who are taking income without investing anything in their property. It's really the best illustration that I've seen in the past several years of how broken the system actually is. And despite our best efforts to cite and do everything, the landlord has appealed several of her actions, where she is coming to one of our appeals boards. We are going back out for a reinspection tomorrow. The two visits that I've made since our team inspection, which I think was June or July, blatant, not even an attempt to clean stairwells, or move things, or do anything that would, or clean the feces off of mailboxes. There's been nothing. It's been extremely frustrating. I think that we share the concerns, and I know that Councilman Barney and I have had some conversations about our strategies in terms of policies. I know that you're working with community services, and I know that you've had some frustration with her, and with us, and with the system, but I think it's important for you to know that we are not giving up on 200 Prospect Street. It was a subject of discussion last Wednesday for code enforcement. The voucher issue was raised again with our Housing Authority folks, and they are, they have an investigation they are looking at. But at this point, you know, it's just all of these moving pieces, and if we're overwhelmed by it, I can imagine how you feel. So we are still here, ready and willing to work with you, to look at some alternatives, and to try to overcome some of the obstacles that we have concerning income and all of these other things, the eviction piece, all of that, that is affecting some of the options. So without going, you know, into too many details about some of your personal issues in terms of what we know, we have to deal in terms of what we know we have to deal with, um, I know Aubrey was not in the office today. I know she may not be tomorrow, but the rest of us I know are committed from a code enforcement perspective that we are willing to continue to work with you. And I know you're mad at me and that's okay. I, you know...
That's a side note.
I know, but, but I understand all that and I'm mad at them. I don't understand how that happened and it's, I don't think that that was the best move on their part, but I don't control them. So there's not much I can do as frustrated as I am. So we can continue to talk. I, you have a lot of people up here who are advocating for you, um, for code enforcement in general, for housing, and I'd like to think that in the next week or so, we may be able to find a landlord where there could be some movement. And, you know, your, your job is to continue to look for employment, to try to find a soft landing spot and to try to do what you can to build up your piece of it so that we can take those assets and match it with someone who's willing to, to take this on.
Um, I just was approved for RAP, Rapid Rehousing because I...
That's great news.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, because I've never used it before.
Yep.
So, um, my case manager gave me that good news today and, um, I don't think with the $100 worth of pictures I have of my, uh, slum, um, I'm really going to need too much. I'm not worried about the eviction part because I can't wait to get out of there.
No, I, I, I totally get it, but again, we have to balance what an eviction means when a court looks at it without having those 100 pictures. And so that's what we have to work with. So again, we're here, we're not going anywhere and we understand the situation that you're in. Brittany and Mary at the end directly represent your neighborhood. I'm, you know where to find me. We all live in your neighborhood. We're on Federal Hill as well and a lot of us are very well acquainted with the landlords that are good for Bristol as well as the ones that we would be very happy to see invest elsewhere. And that process is ongoing as well. So, um, I'm glad you came and I'm glad you told your story. I'm gonna ask if any of the other council members, I know some of you, um, have also spoken with Sheena, but some of you may not have had that opportunity. Does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Through the chair. Sheena, I, I, I want to thank you actually because we spoke first, firsthand and, uh, rather quickly you had to educate us on, on the system and things to that nature, which we had to pull out resources. And, uh, Brittany and I had several conversations in regards to, um, your situation. And just so you know, we're, we're here for you. There's so much that we can do with our hands being tied. But the resources that we found, um, for us, they were very helpful to us. They were very sympathetic with your situation, although the process has to take a certain way at some point, um, I, I just want to thank you for getting, letting us try to give you the best help that we could. Um, and we didn't give up on you either. Today, there may be something that nothing's about, nothing comes about, but guess what? Tomorrow, we may come across a landlord who's here or there and that's how it happens. So, um, please keep us updated and, um, informed as to how you're making out. So we really, you know...
Yeah.
Appreciate everything.
Is the inspection tomorrow or Friday?
Tomorrow, because of course she was asking me when I emailed her two weeks ago about the rats.
Yeah.
She still refers to them as mice.
Yeah.
It looks like a rat to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, at 2:30 in the morning when me and my son are fishing out of the stove, it's just unreal.
No. It's, um...
It's not the memories I wanted for my kids, I'll put it that way.
Yeah. It's not a good place and I've met a few of the other tenants who are very nice people as well, as opposed to the one that's a, a very violent problem tenant. And, um, it's a good neighborhood. It should have been a nice place to land, but unfortunately...
Yeah, we're by the hospital.
Right. But unfortunately, it's not.
How could this be bad? Both in a week, we were raided and I was like, whoa.
Through the chair, if I could just say, because I, um, you know, I talked to you on the phone and I, I'm getting like emotional just seeing how you're feeling and seeing your kids. I know you've gone through so much and like knowing that at the city we've done pretty much everything we can do and that the only way we could tell you to get help was to not stay with your kids for the night and stay in a homeless shelter just exposes how disgustingly broken the state system is with 2-on-1 and the process that they put people through. It does not help people. It holds people back from fulfilling their potential. It causes them to make their lives harder in order to have a chance to be better and it's gross. So I will be writing to, um, my legislator, Chris, and explaining your story. I don't know if he's on any boards, but hopefully he can refer this to someone when they're in session because this is just a joke, a joke. And COVID exposed just how broken it is because now with landlords being choosier about who they're renting to because of the eviction restrictions and the lack of affordable housing, people like Sheena who are just trying to get on their feet, don't have a chance without knocking themselves down. And that's just so un-American to me. And, um, I'm sorry for being emotional as a, you know, I would be branded as a 30-year-old mom that, you know, crying at the city council, yeah, of course, but, you know, stereotypical. But it's just really unfair and, um, and I know you've been upset and you're, you have every right to be and, um, I'm just glad we have had Ellen doing what she can because every time I've had to talk to her about this, she's been like right on top of making sure that what we can do here is getting done. And Scott was able to identify some people, you know, through the back way of trying to get into 2-on-1, but it just didn't change the fact that the process is just not right. So...
2-on-1 has been a significant issue for us that needs to be fixed. And the, the COVID restrictions that have reduced the amount of available houses, um, whether it be shelter capacity or even their attempt to create a hotel inventory where people can go in order to be safe in the, in the early days of COVID, none of it's working. So, um, we need to match some of the resources. We need to do more with the eviction prevention program. We need to do more with the RAP program. So that's great news because to me, that, that's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel.
And I got crap. I don't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but I told him, I told him ahead of time, I'm like, I don't want to work anything out with this landlord.
Okay, no, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
But that might be, it might be transferable.
Electric bill for me. So I can go in with a clean slate, which is amazing. But I just don't want this eviction to haunt me.
Yeah. So those are things that we can help you with. So I think the best advice tonight is that, again, thank you for coming and sharing your story. I think it's going to galvanize a lot of us to do more and do the inspection tomorrow and see where it ends. It's also important, although it's frustrating to a lot of people, to understand that the code enforcement process is democracy, small d. It means that everybody has a right to be noticed. There's timelines that affect people's opportunities to respond. Even landlords have rights, so to speak, and so that has also drawn out the process through the appeals and some of the other pieces of this. But, um, it is a priority property on the code enforcement agenda and that hasn't changed. So, um, we are going to continue to, to go forward with this and my best hope is that your landlord is no longer a landlord in Bristol in the very near future.
Thank you, Jesus.
Okay.
Or Ellen.
Can I just say one thing before we go? Please give me a call because I have worked in the eviction court in our state court system. So I just, I just have a couple of things to add and I just echo what everyone else said. There's problems with the system, so...
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is here that would like to speak under public participation that did not have an opportunity to sign up? Is there anybody online that would like to speak during public participation? All right, hearing none, we're gonna move on to announcements. I'm gonna start with members of the council. Is there anyone here on the dais who has any announcements for us?
None from me.
None from me, sorry.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, I just have one thing I'd like to mention. Over the last, uh, seven months or so with COVID, uh, there have been a lot of challenges in the city, uh, but there are some things that have, have gone in a, in a positive way. I just want to mention a few of the things. We have businesses opening over the last seven months, Jersey Mikes, Firehouse Subs, Pure Foods, Five Below, Harbor Freight, Foodies, uh, and there's going to be some more things discussed later in this meeting. So there are things, good things that are happening, uh, for Bristol. But I do want to mention that during social distancing and wearing masks and as we hopefully conquer COVID, these businesses do need your help. Uh, many of the restaurants have curbside service or takeout, um, and the new stores, uh, with, with your masks, it's, it's a safe place to, to go. So I, I'd like to recommend to the public to frequent these places. Still remember them. We want these places available to us when COVID is a distant memory. So please do your best. When you're thinking about going out for takeout, stay in Bristol. When you're thinking about, uh, going out to a store, stay in Bristol. Help, help Bristol survive through this, this COVID tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly, any announcements?
Yes, I, I guess I could, Your Honor. I was gonna do it under unfinished business, but I guess it doesn't matter.
What were you gonna do?
Speaking about my conversation with Marco Palmieri today.
I actually think it's better there or as a partner with, um, what Councilwoman Barney is gonna talk about with Halloween because it's kind of matches with that.
Right, okay, so I'll wait.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to highlight tonight the accomplishments of several department heads who have been extremely assertive and proactive in identifying grants outside of our, um, established grant process with our grant writer, which is in the Economic and Community Development Commission who services and works with all of our departments to identify grants. But that's a lot of work for one person and so what we've been very fortunate is that a lot of our department heads and staff within certain departments have begun to ferret out grants themselves in order to support their programs. And tonight I want to specifically acknowledge the work of the Park and Rec Department. They received their $68,000 National Park and Rec Grant from the NRPA for the, um, addition to the mountain bike in Rockwell Park. They've also received a $5,000 grant in conjunction with the opioid task force for, uh, prescription parks, uh, which is going to be prescription pads for people to go and get fresh air and utilize the parks that doctors will be able to utilize. And there's also a magnet that outlines all of the different parks. So that's a really creative program to encourage people to use our passive recreation as well as our, um, active playgrounds. Also, uh, I really want to commend Harley Graham, who I don't thank enough for all of the work that he's done with emergency management. Not only has he been the person that has acquired all of our PPE and everything else from the state and other reserves, but sometimes he stumbles upon things and says yes to them, like eight crates of Dial Body Wash that we are now giving out to some of our nonprofits and, um, you know, really great at bringing resources back to the community. Marco Palmieri, our Director of Health, recently secured a three-year, $150,000 grant to help with some of the COVID impact to his department through the CDC and it'll be delivered through the Department of Public Health. Debbie Prozo today learned that she had filled out a survey a few weeks ago and she was very detail-oriented in her survey results, as we all know Debbie to be. And that attention to detail garnered her today a $78,000 grant that she did not know at the time that survey was predicated on. The state has put aside $2 million for their CARES Act money to be directed to the libraries. A survey was sent out and those librarians who actually responded to the survey were noticed today that they were receiving portions of that money. And I can tell you that there's a lot of librarians right now who are not too happy that they hit delete on that email because they didn't have time. So kudos to her. And then I'll end with our town and city clerk who actually went out and aggressively sought a grant. Was it Zuckerberg? Tech and Civic Life Grant because she knew that the $47,000 given to us by the state to run both the primary and the general election was not enough. So she has brought in an additional $37,300 to augment our efforts to ensure that we have fair and accurate elections. So congratulations to Teresa as well. I think that that's just indicative of the high quality that we do have of our department heads and the extra work that they're going to in order to ensure that city services continue to be delivered. So I just wanted to recognize them tonight. There's many more that have happened over the course of the months previous to this and I know that there's gonna be more coming, so we will continue to highlight those achievements as they occur. Moving on to the consent calendar, um, items 5A through E. Are there any of these items that anybody would like to pull off? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports and committee reports. The first one is the update from the mayor's task force on opioid prevention. And, um, in the interest of time, I'm just gonna summarize quickly. Uh, the task force has just gotten back to being active, um, in in-person meetings after, um, the first few months where we were doing some online. And at our last meeting, we did have a metric that I thought was encouraging, uh, despite the topic, and it's regarding the number of residents who have overdosed in the last six months. And it's a comparison between 2019 and 2020. In 2020, there was a 20% reduction in the number of Connecticut Hospital ED visits from Bristol residents for opioid-related overdoses compared with 2019. So remember, our data tracking means that if you're from Bristol, but you present at St. Mary's or St. Francis or anywhere else, but you have a 06010 zip code, it's gonna get tracked to Bristol's opioid use. The interesting data is that in 2020, male residents ended up in hospital emergency rooms for opioid-related overdoses 27% more than they did in 2019. But for females, that number was 58% less, 2020 to 2019. So there was also no significant change in age distribution, so that was something that was telling as well. So round numbers, 2019, total number of residents who overdosed and ended up in a Connecticut hospital, 122. 92 of them were at Bristol. And in 2020, right now, we are at 98, 75 of which presented at Bristol Hospital. 2019, they were 70 men. This year it's 77. Last year for women, it was 52. This year it's 22. And the ages still range, um, mostly in the 30 to 39 range with some older and some younger. So this is the type of, uh, work that we've been trying to do to get a handle on where we are with some of these overdoses. And I think the inclusion of Narcan in the community and all of the community trainings that we've done has definitely influenced some of these numbers going lower. I'll now ask for the report from the Memorial Boulevard Arts Magnet School Building Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The building committee continues to meet monthly. I can tell you that a lot of the demolition and the hazmat work has been completed. And as I reported to you last month, the, a significant portion of the, of the project went out to bid and, um, the results of that, of the bids were both aggressive and very encouraging. We had a number of contractors, um, submit bids and, um, they went through the review process. I'll tell you that so far with the bids that have been, uh, both vetted and are under scope review, um, we're under budget and it looks like the project will move along and be on time. The committee now continues to focus on things that we eliminated, uh, from the budget earlier to, to try to stay in budget, uh, and we're refocusing on what we can do to maximize our return on our investment and maximize value in the building. The committee meets monthly, um, either look at the Board of Education website or the city website and, and the meetings are both, uh, virtual and open to the public. Your Honor, would it be appropriate to move on to Agenda Item 14, which is related? Would you like me to...
Yes, let's have a motion to move Agenda Item 14 to the Memorial Boulevard Committee Report.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The floor is yours, Councilman Proleski.
Thank you, Your Honor. The item number 14 is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign a letter of authorization with the motto in downs, a joint venture, uh, to permit a, a said entity to expedite a second set of construction contracts prior to execution of a change order between the city, uh, and said entity. That's the construction manager on the project and what it does is it enables them to, after the scope of review of all these contracts, to make change orders and make, um, and move without, uh, move faster without waiting for another meeting to be held. So it's something that will move this project and the process along, uh, during the bid process.
Second. Motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion concerning Agenda Item 14? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Your Honor, just for a clarification, it's...
And, Your Honor, just for a clarification, it's item 15. 15 on our agenda.
Then I don't have the new agenda because it's 14 on mine.
Yeah, it's 14 on mine.
Okay, well, just, you're going to have to tell me what you added at some point. Okay.
Thank you, Therese.
Why don't we go from that into ordinance committee? Do you have any items to come for ordinance?
Your Honor, I apologize that they didn't get onto the agenda, but we, the ordinance committee had two public hearings that are referred from the committee to this council, if I may. Your Honor, hereby move that Sections 22-1 and 22-16 through 22-30, Water, Sewer and sewage disposal section of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is hereby amended as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Your Honor, one more. This allows us to comply with the state statute regarding tax exemption for cogeneration energy systems. I hereby move that Section 2-12.2, tax exemption for cogeneration systems of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bristol is hereby amended as presented. I further move that the city clerk publish said amendments and additions to the Code of Ordinances, and that they become effective upon the expiration of 14 days from the date of their publication in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Bristol. I might add, this is a new section of the ordinance.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, moving on to committee reports from members. Councilwoman Fortier?
None from me, Your Honor.
Councilwoman Barney?
Just one, Your Honor. I just wanted to, for the fire board of commissioners, mention that our two new hires, firefighter Bento Bango and firefighter Terrier, both received excellent reviews for the recruitment class that they're attending right now. Firefighter Bento Bango was elected squad leader by his squad and is doing well academically, and Terrier is also excelling academically with all scores in the 90s. So all the commissioners were very proud of their achievements so far. We're really excited about those two new hires joining the department, and that's the most exciting news that we've got for you from my boards today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports from you?
Thank you, Nicole.
Councilman Rosato?
Sure, Your Honor. The drug take-back day, it will be on Saturday, October 24th, at the farmer's market from 10:00 to 1:00 with the police department. I also just want to piggyback off of some of the department heads and the great jobs that they're doing in two of the councils I serve liaison to. It's our youth commission and parks board. They've been working great together since the merger. A lot of progress has been made from the reorganization, from streamlining the departments to prioritizing services for the community, especially during our nation's pandemic. But what's been very beneficial is the collaboration between both groups. They've met and strategized together on many issues, and tomorrow they're going to be meeting to discuss the community needs assessment survey that was taking place prior. I'm the city's master plan. So we truly understand and appreciate the value that comes together when we work together for a better tomorrow. So I just want to thank them and the leadership that they've been possessing through this, the past couple of years. So, thank you.
You better mention him by name, or he's going to be upset.
Josh Maderos. Dr. Josh Maderos and his staff.
That's better. I just saved you.
Thank you.
Councilman Han?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to bring three new items for the real estate committee to the table.
Okay, motion has been made for three items. Motion has been seconded. All in, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, the first two motions pertain to a public hearing that was recently done for the real estate earlier today. First one is I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter into a purchase and sale agreement to sell to BHF Logistics Incorporated, or its assigns, the city-owned property known as Lot 2, Southeast Bristol Business Park, in the amount of $137,000. I hereby further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporation counsel, or assistant corporation counsel be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the same.
Second. Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I just wanted to remind people that this is, BHF Logistics is planning on a 9,000-square-foot headquarters and trucking terminal at this location.
Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Yes, Your Honor, the second, I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter into a purchase and sale agreement to sell to R. Pelton Builders Incorporated, doing business as EcoSmart Home Services, or its assigns, the city-owned property known as Lot 6, Southeast Bristol Business Park, in the amount of $156,000. I hereby further move that the acting mayor, Mayor, Acting Mayor Corporation Counsel or Assistant Corporation Counsel be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate this transaction.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, and, Your Honor, this is, EcoSmart is intending on building a 12,000-square-foot corporate headquarters at this location.
And that lot is 2.19 acres. Lot 2, which you had previously mentioned, is 2.55 acres. So making progress.
Yes.
Any other comments or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, Your Honor, I hereby move that the city of Bristol refer the matter of orphaned properties located on Jennings Terrace, Eugene Avenue, and Mountain View Terrace to the real estate committee for its analysis and review.
Second. Discussion. So this is to put some of these back on the tax rolls and get rid of them off of the city-owned rolls?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any comments or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, any committee reports, Councilman Kelly?
No, I do not.
Okay. We will go to unfinished business. Community information on COVID data. I just thought it would be a good time to update. Did you have anything for this item, or did you just want me to run through some of the data?
Well, we can do it together. If I just start with my, based on somewhat my conversation with Marco Palmieri, the Bristol Burlington Health Director, and then you can share some of those stats, Mayor. I spoke to Marco Palmieri today, and he's concerned, as anyone paying attention is, in Bristol, we're trending upwards in infections with COVID. Since Friday, there's 38 new cases reported. So there's some factors that bring this about. Part of it is COVID fatigue. Everyone's tired of wearing masks and, you know, curtailing what we know is normal. But with the flu season coming about and school back in session, the schools are doing a very good job, but there are ancillary activities connected with schools that are spreading the virus. So we just have to be hyper vigilant now because this is very, very serious. I mean, Bristol citizens have done a good job, but now it's even more important to keep our distance and just be vigilant in all our activities, wearing masks, et cetera. And Marco is particularly concerned because he has determined super-spreader events, you know, particularly here in town, and stags, weddings, showers, wherever there's alcohol involved, people are loosening up a little bit too much in under-phase-three bars, walk-up bars are going to be allowed at private events. So we just really all have to stay hyper vigilant. And I was surprised, one thing he shared with me that I was surprised at, that the most vulnerable, the most infected demographic is older white males. And they are, we are, I guess I qualify for an older white male, the most vulnerable. So even if young people can generally fight off this infection, their older grandparent or older relative might not be. So we ask everyone to be cognizant of that. And maybe you can back up some of that with some data, Mayor.
Some quick facts. When we look at the number of cases and deaths, our high point was the week of April 5th, where we had 102 cases and 18 deaths that week. We continued to decline from that point. Low point was the week of August 2nd. And now, as Councilwoman Kelly said, starting the week of 9/13, we bounced up from 12. The next week, there were 26 new cases. The week after that, 20. And as you heard since Friday, we're now at 38. General population, and this is a combined stat with Burlington, which also is part of our health district, of the general population, the deaths that we've had from COVID is 15, but in the skilled nursing facilities, it was 63. By race, it's an interesting stat. As he said, it's 539 infected cases and deaths have been white, 69% Latino. And by gender, it is affecting 59% women and 41% men. So hospitalizations have gone down. We've had 73, well, actually, it's more now, I think, since last Thursday, and Burlington has only had two. The good stat is that the amount of testing that occurred in Bristol was extremely high. And so we are continuing to test high, and our infection rate does continue to be low. Our average age for infection is 53. The average age for death is 83. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, moving on, I think it would make sense here if we flipped 8 and go straight to B because some of this conversation pertains to Halloween. And Councilwoman Barney has prepared some protocols and regulatory-type information for all of us to share. I'm sure that some of the other elected officials have been asked the question, as has my office, about whether Bristol is canceling Halloween. We do not have that power to do that. We have no inclination to do that, nor would it be something that would be enforceable, which are usually some of the factors that we evaluate before taking a policy position. So I'm going to yield the floor to Councilwoman Barney so she can do the overview of what we feel might be appropriate parameters for Halloween.
Thank you so much. So, you know, as a parent, Halloween is definitely one of my favorite holidays, to see my daughter dressed up and enjoying trick-or-treating with her friends. So since the beginning of the pandemic, I saw a lot of shirts and slogans that said, "Wear your mask, save Halloween." And because of the diligence of the residents of our city and state, the state released some formal guidance on how to enjoy Halloween this year, and many things we had to cancel, but thankfully, this year, Halloween is not canceled. Pending the continued diligence of all of us in maintaining the rigorous hygiene requirements that we've been fulfilling, our physical distancing and wearing masks when we need to. So the state of Connecticut released some detailed guidance on their website, as well as an article or website that the CDC put together, that the mayor shared with me earlier. So we're just encouraging everyone to follow those guidelines. And I picked out a few of the key ones because I feel like this is probably the best way for Bristol residents to support trick-or-treating and have fun with their neighbors this year. Ideally, participate in one-way trick-or-treating where goodie bags or a large bowl of candy are placed outside your home for families to grab and go so that they continue to maintain social distance. Obviously, the worst case is having people come up to your door and having every child reach their hand into a bowl. So if you are not able to set up a table or anything like that, you can give candy one at a time, hand washing and sanitizing in between, not allowing children to put their hands in the bowl. These are all, once again, not Brittany Barney's recommendations, because I'm definitely not a scientist, and I trust those that have put this together. It is in the CDC's recommendations and the state's recommendations to follow these guidelines. Remain six feet away from people who are not within your household at all times, and all trick-or-treating participants are encouraged to wear a mask or face covering while outside at all times. Halloween masks made of rubber are not suggested, and instead, maybe you can consider a nifty Halloween-themed fabric. I'm sure somebody in your family is creative and could put that together. I would ask Mary Fortier to do that for me. If you're not comfortable with handing out candy, you always have the option of turning off your light, as many folks in my old apartment complex used to do, because otherwise they would have to give out like 30 bags of candy. This year, there's plenty of fun alternatives to celebrate Halloween, too. So locally, you can check out WAT2SIX, which is a great institution in Bristol. They've got a great garden center, and they're hosting a Halloween Happening, which is happening every weekend through Halloween. There's a Halloween Spooktacular, which is hosted by the City of Bristol's Parks and Recreation Department and Youth Services. Dr. Maderos's team, as we need to refer to him by name.
Two mentions.
Yep. There will be a costume contest, evening spooky movies, and more. Saturday, October 24th, at 7:00 PM downtown. And last but not least, there is the children's, actually, there's two more, Children's Halloween Spooky Scavenger Hunt at the New England Carousel Museum on Halloween night. You do have to pre-register, and I'm sure it will sell out, so make sure you check that out. And then the last is that there is a Halloween-themed farmer's market for October 31st. Our farmer's market, it's their last hurrah. Come on down with your best dress. You'll see Councilman Rosato and Councilman Han. I'm sure they'll be dressed in Halloween attire as well. And so I just wanted to congratulate everybody. You're on NoMakeTV, you're watching this, you wore your mask, and you saved Halloween. So keep it up because this year is proving how great our community is. Once again, please don't just take my word for it. Check the CDC's website. Oh, it's the state's website as well, so that way you feel comfortable and that you're following the correct and most up-to-date protocols. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Does that mean I really have to dress up now?
Oh, for sure.
Okay, Mary, can you make me something now?
Oh, my God. I have some fabric left over from a pumpkin costume, but I'm not sure there's enough left.
So you guys have drawn the really great Saturdays for...
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Every holiday.
And the electronics take-back, where you sweated profusely.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll go back up to Item 8A. There's really not much to add. I think the real estate committee, doing their Section 8-24 referrals tonight, is moving that process forward. Both of those companies are very enthusiastic about coming to Bristol, and without a lot of activity in the Southeast Business Park over the last couple of years, it's just been tremendous to see the interest now. There is a third lot that is under consideration by a company, and that looks very promising as well. And actually, another phone call came in this week, which is very preliminary, but it's interesting how certain segments of government and things that we do and services we provide have stagnated because of COVID. And then other ones, it's really taking off. And manufacturing seems to be one of the ones that has been very robust during the pandemic. So we are continuing to work very closely with BHF and with EcoSmart, and we look forward to having even more. I'm reviewing the map right now, and there had originally been seven lots available. Lot 1 is where PODS is. Lot 2 is where BHF is going. Lot 3 is available, but that shares a band of wetlands, which is one of the challenges that BHF is looking at right now through site planning. Lot 4 is GMN. Lot 5 is sold. Lot 6 is under consideration. 7 is sold. And then we have 8 and 9, which has some easements through it, and 10 and 11 left. And then 12 was sold. That's the one that faces Redstone Hill Road. So overall, I think there's been a lot of very good progress there. Following site plan, we will be moving on to incentives and see what we can do to bring some additional companies and those jobs here. So good work by Justin Malley and all that he does in order to keep all of those balls in the air. I do have one item that needs to come onto the agenda. That is a late addition, but it's a topic that we are familiar with. So I am going to ask for the indulgence of the council to bring onto the table the matter of Covanta and their permitting.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I did forget to bring my hard copy with me, so just bear with me. I'm, right now, I'm reviewing for everyone a letter that we approved and sent to the DEEP permitting on April 11th. DEEP permitting on April 14th, 2020. And this is one of the issues that is very frustrating to me. And I see we have a state rep candidate in the back of the room, Andrew Rasmussen-Toller, and I'd like you to listen carefully, because these are one of the things that we need you to fix in Hartford. Covanta has been looking to convert one of their permits from general construction material to medical waste. And we approve that. We sent it through all of our community outreach. We went to every board. We had a meeting. We had two meetings, actually, one with the neighbors and one at City Hall. And we have asked for the consideration of DEEP to support this regulatory waste disposal authorization. This has been going on for almost two years, and to date, it has not been approved. So what, my last conversation with our friends at Covanta, who do happen to be our second highest taxpayer, is that they would like us to do another letter, again encouraging DEEP to look at this permit and expedite its execution. So for the interest of tonight, I just want to remind everybody, so that you're comfortable knowing what you're voting on, that what we asked for last time is for them to favorably consider the application by Covanta to receive and process regulated medical waste at the Covanta Bristol Resource Recovery Facility. And that we have partnered with them for the 35 years that they've been here in Bristol, and that we believe that our relationship is predicated on the understanding that they responsibly manage their waste. It's our understanding that they have demonstrated to DEEP the limited capacity available to handle these materials, as well as the distance to the facilities permitted in other states, would make this a very viable option for many people who seek medical waste opportunities. They have experience handling what's considered special waste, and we believe that it's vital to the public health to have appropriate local disposal of biomedical waste, which could be provided by the Bristol facility, exclusive of human tissue or anatomical organs, which we have asked specifically to be excluded. We do not want to be in that business. So we are recognizing that Covanta has invested considerable resources into developing this proposal, including a public presentation and going before many of our boards. And thus far, we are not aware of any opposition to the proposal. So we are going to ask tonight that we reaffirm that letter that was set in April of 2020, which I will author with your consent, and we will again ask DEEP to take some action.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to new business by council members? Anything?
None from me.
No, Your Honor.
No, thank you.
No, Your Honor.
No, Your Honor.
That was the right answer. Moving on to appointments, there's only a few. The first one is to reappoint Karen Hints to a three-year term through October of 2023 to the City's Energy Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is to appoint Erica Pearson to replace Jeffrey Beauchamp on the Diversity Council. The Diversity Council does not have any terms.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Erica's going to be great on the Diversity Council. I think she might have called in tonight, so hopefully she is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the mayor's task force on HIV/AIDS prevention, I'd like to put forward the name of Janelle Howard, who is our best coordinator from Youth and Community Services, to join that task force.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one is the creation of a new task force. I'm calling it the Rockwell Theater Planning Task Force. Many of you remember, we did have a Memorial Boulevard Cultural Community Center, Inc. committee before the magnet school idea came forward. So since it was not going to be an arts-centered building anymore, that committee is no longer appropriate. They also do not have to do as much fundraising as originally was planned, especially now with the whole school project coming in under budget significantly. A lot of the items that we thought we would have to privately fundraise for on the theater end is now not coming to fruition. So instead, I'd like to put together a strategic planning group that will start planning for the opening of the theater, how that theater is going to be run, how it will operate, and providing the resources that it needs in order to sustain itself. So this is going to be a task force, and the members that I'd like to put forward tonight are Councilman Greg Han, who will also liaison between them and the Arts and Culture Commission, which is going to be taking over the stewardship of the 501(c)(3) number that the previous MBCCC group created, because that has value for fundraising and for grants purposes. Park Superintendent Josh Maderos, third mention tonight. Arts and Culture Commissioner Samantha Cludier. Board of Education Representative Leah McCabe, who is very involved in the Bristol Central Arts Program and is now at Northeast School. And I believe we have a player to be named later that we were unable to get in touch with today. So for tonight, we are going to do the, Councilman Greg Han, Park Superintendent Josh Maderos, Arts and Culture Commissioner Samantha Cludier Bonifetti, and Leah McCabe.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion.
Great group.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the record and for the public, I am looking for someone with construction knowledge to go on the Building Code Board of Appeals, who have a vacancy for an alternate. I am looking for one more person to go on the Diversity Council for the actual number of seats allocated there, although anybody can participate without benefit of having a voting seat. I am still accepting resumes and interest from anybody who would like to serve on the Board of Finance. We have a vacancy there. I am always looking for people interested in serving on land use boards, because we often have vacancies that come up, and to be able to have a folder of ready resumes is very appropriate and better for the land use process, so that we don't have long vacancies. And, let's see. And actually, anybody who is interested in health as well, that is obviously, over the last seven months, a topic where we're trying to groom some people, so that we have a steady group of resources available there. If anybody's interested in any of those topics or panels, please contact the mayor's office.
Mayor, I think the resignations is what was missing from the agenda.
Resignations?
I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you were done with the point.
That's what was added.
That was the item that got added in. There were no resignations for this month, so the resignations weren't in there. We then put them in. We sent the council people their copy, which didn't have the resignations.
Oh, okay.
And that's what we sent you today, because of Friday.
And I didn't see it. Yeah, I did see you sent it to me, but I didn't, I didn't print the new one. All right. So do you have any resignations?
There are no resignations, Your Honor.
So we're good.
Sorry, Your Honor.
Okay. So we are done with that portion of our agenda. I will turn it over to the Town and City Clerk for Agenda Item Number 10 and beyond.
To approve an increase in the Greenwood Industries contract 2C2063 to include replacing the fans 1 to 6 on the roof at Stafford School for $36,538.95.
So moved.
Discussion.
I do have, Your Honor, I just want to mention that this item and the next item both pertain to the Stafford roof replacement. This roof replacement is including the solar panels, so it's a very exciting product, project for us, because it's the first school that's going to have solar panels. And because it is on time and very under budget, these two items are things that the, they would like to add back into the project, things that we did not include originally, the fans on the roof. This way, they will, it will all be new at the same time and presumably last a good long time. And then the next motion has to do with the flashing and some of the trim around the roof, and it will, again, be a much more finished project, because it's so under budget.
Great. Any questions? Item 10. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, to approve an increase in the Greenwood Industries contract 2C2063 to include repairing existing flashing, additional soffits, and exposed wood at Stafford School for $107,056.24.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To award contract 2P1962D rehabilitation of the Mellon Street Bridge for engineering services to GM2 Associates Incorporated for $386,784 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
To award contract 2P1962C replacement rehabilitation of the East Street Bridge for engineering services to GM2 Associates Incorporated for $474,707 and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I think that our Public Works Director is going to have a lot of work going on in the next couple of years, and I think that it's really good that it's happening in advance of the school coming online and the theater. So there's going to be a really strong infrastructure on the Boulevard and also Down Street coming up in the future as well. So these are good projects that are all going to be, hopefully, coordinated well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we did the last, the next item already. The 16 is to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign any and all documents associated with community connectivity grant application to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for up to $500,000 and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
So moved.
Second.
And again, just to comment, some of this will be applied toward the Memorial Boulevard area as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item, to approve the branch tax payment processing service agreement between People's United Bank and the City of Bristol, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Your Honor, may I add? This is a very, very good program for both Bristol and our taxpayers. Our taxpayers will be allowed or will have the ability to make tax payments to any People's United Bank branch, and it doesn't cost the city any more money than it would if a payment went directly through our lockbox system. So congratulations to the Treasurer's Office and the Comptroller. This is a good thing.
Yep. I believe Ann Bednaz, our tax collector, has worked on this.
I'm sorry.
Too.
Missed Ann.
No, this is great, and I know that this has been a long time coming, so I'm really glad that we're going to be able to add this to our level of service. Any other comments or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the next three items are executive sessions. One is Stephen Murphy versus City of Bristol. The second is Charles Gelsinis versus City of Bristol, and the last one is the review of the Chief of Police employment contract.
Okay.
Going in on those executive sessions, for the first two would be Attorney Steg and myself. And then for Number 19, it would be our comptroller, Diane Waldron, and our Director of Human Resources, Mark Penny, and myself.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for items as enumerated, Stephen Murphy, Charlie Gelsinis, and the Chief of Police's employment contract.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back shortly. I'd like to have a motion to come back into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Please let the record reflect that no votes were taken in executive session. Are there any motions to come before the City Council?
Yes, Your Honor, I have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement in the matter of Stephen Murphy versus City of Bristol for the total consideration of $20,000 for the following claims. I should have took this into consideration. So it's WCC number 7084539, WCC number 7084544, I need to take my mask off, WCC number 7084676, WCC number 7084736, WCC number 7084792, WCC number 7084955, WCC number 7087525, WCC number 7087576, WCC number 7087674, WCC number 7087852, WCC number 7087947, WCC number 7087991, WCC number 7088382, and WCC number 7088408, WCC number 7088467. I hereby further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporation counsel, or assistant corporation counsel be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the full and final settlement.
Second.
Discussion or comments? This gentleman is no longer employed by the City of Bristol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the City Council?
I have a motion, Your Honor. I hear, I'm going to. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter a full and final settlement in the matter of Charles Gelsinis versus City of Bristol, WCC file number 601003507, in consideration of a payment of $66,000. And in the matter of Charles Gelsinis versus the City of Bristol, WCC file number 601083853, in consideration of a payment of $44,000, for a total payment of $110,000. I further move that the mayor, acting mayor, corporation counsel, or assistant corporation counsel be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effectuate the full and final settlement.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the City Council?
I have one, Your Honor.
You're supposed to wait at least 10 seconds.
The chief is over there sweating so bad. He's, he, look at him. God, he's got to lighten up a little.
It was like three seconds.
Was it?
Seems like forever to me. Motion to approve the Chief of Police new contract for a four-year term from April 2020 to April 2024.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Chief.
Yay.
Would you like to say anything?
Of course he will. He waited the whole meeting, and it was a long one, so.
First and foremost, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've had the absolute privilege and honor to serve as a Bristol police officer for the past 26 and a half years. Honored to be the police chief here in Bristol, a position I stepped into approximately five years ago in October, when I took over as interim. I can't believe it's already gone by that quick, and we're talking about a new contract. It's really been a fast-paced ride. Definitely among the most challenging times in my career, but I'm looking forward to the challenges. We have a great police department, we have a great city, and I'm just so privileged to serve it, and I thank you all for another opportunity to be your chief of police. So thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations.
Are there any other business to come before the City Council? Hearing none. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.